Good morning, everybody.
I was muted. Good morning, Amy. You're in the dark.
Can't seem to get enough light in this room. We don't have overhead light and it just feels very dark. So thanks for noticing.
Paul, is it the camera or is that a big cup of coffee?
It's a tall, it's a tall cup of coffee.
It has oddly been one of my favorite things about Zoom meetings is checking out everybody's coffee mugs choices.
Hi, Amy.
Hi, welcome. All right, I should probably stop pulling around with coffee mugs. Yes, I like that one too, Clayton. I noticed you. Do a quick count of who's here. I actually do think we have quorum. Okay, so we'll go ahead and get started. Good morning, everybody. It is 7:31. We will go ahead and get started. Are there, welcome to our November meeting. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Amy, just that I'll be presenting at number nine instead of Chris.
Okay. All right, hearing no other agenda adjustments, do we have any public comments?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Kim.
I recommend John Moore to be general manager for Green Mountains. Hands up.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other members of the public? Nick and Nate, are you all alone in there in that conference room? Okay. All right, then we will move on to the consent agenda, which are pages three through 12 in the in the packet. So we have the October 21st board meeting and of course the check registered. Any edits or comments?
I'm moving approve, approve the consent agenda as published.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Susan. Any other comments, discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Wonderful. Any anyone opposed or abstaining? All right, we will move forward to the capital, the FY26 capital budget adjustment, not to be confused with the FY27 capital budget, which we'll hear just following. So we're looking at pages 13 through 16 in our packet and I'll turn it over to Matt.
Thanks, Amy. Good morning, everyone. So as Amy said, there's a memo in the board packet. I'm going to share my screen. I have the proposed adjustment up that I'll walk through right now. So we are making several changes to the FY26 capital budget to align this with the executed amendment with B-Trans. So starting with line E, facility PM, so this is increasing to forty-four thousand sixteen dollars. That's a nineteen thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollar and sixty-nine cent increase to program some additional funding from B-Trans in the amendment for this line item. Line F, spare parts miscellaneous support equipment, that's being increased by one hundred and eleven thousand six ninety-seven fifty, also to program some additional funding received by B-Trans. Before I get into the, the other line items, I'll just mention some of these changes are correcting the federal, state and local split when we proposed the original capital budget and the subsequent adjustments. We were still working with B-Trans on the level of funding in the First Amendment. And we had used the historical eighty, ten, ten split, ten percent state, ten percent local for the non-federal share. And discussions with B-Trans were ongoing at that time. When we negotiated the first, First Amendment, B-Trans was not able to increase the state match above the twenty-six hundred that they had originally awarded for the thirty-one Queen City Park facility improvements and master plan study line item. So this is making those adjustments to reflect the actual level of state match for our direct federal capital funds. I will say that Nick and I had prepared for this when Nick was preparing his FY26 operating budget adjustment and the local match figures shown in this budget under the current year local capital match, match the local capital match coming from the FY26 operating budget. So with that said, for line L, the passenger amenities line item, we have a hundred and two dollars and eighteen cents. That's from some state, state matching funds that were provided to us in FY24 that we were able to carry over in subsequent years. And so that one hundred and two eighteen is what has been allocated to that line item in FY26 with the balance coming from our local capital match in FY26 for that line item. We're programming a new line item, line LB. This is for City of Burlington Passenger amenity improvements, and this one is a hundred percent local with ninety thousand three hundred and seventy. This is local funding received from Burlington's assessment for, which was tied to and eliminated or tied to fare free on the college shuttle, which has had fares restored in lieu of City of Burlington taking back that assessment amount. They have agreed to let us keep it and utilize it for passenger amenity improvements in the City of Burlington corridor. So that's programming those funds into the capital budget for that purpose. Line L, our ITS improvement line item, similar to line, or line N, our ITS improvement items, similar to line L, this is adjusting the non-federal match amounts to have a hundred percent of that coming from GMT. Line O, this one has a few different movement parts in it. So I'll start with, we have eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars in federal funding, direct federal funding remaining in one of our federal grants, federal FTA grants for support equipment, which we are programming to use for the replacement server. This allowed B-Trans to push more funding up to the facility PM that they had available. So we have eleven seven fifty-three, that's an eighty percent federal share coming from our federal, direct federal grants. And that is supplementing pass-through funding for this, this project from B-Trans of nineteen thousand seventy-six seventy-one, which gets us to thirty-three, seven sixty-seven ninety-six figure for that, for that line item. Line P, B-Trans was able to award us an additional sixty-five hundred dollars to help with the replacement of one of our shop trucks, which has exceeded its useful life. We have fifty thousand of carryover funds from FY25 for that one. So that's why we're seeing this five thousand in the prior year local capital match fund with the six fifty coming from the current year local, local capital match. Line U, we are increasing this line item by seventeen thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars. That's largely going to support heater replacement that was performed at the facility next door, thirty-one Queen City Park. We replaced, replaced five of the gas-fired resin heaters in that. So this is programming those, those funds to support that, those activities. Line B, this is being increased by two hundred and thirty thousand two hundred and one dollars. This will fund service level agreement with New Flyer, which will include extended warranties for the Heliox bus chargers that are part of this Phase Two charging infrastructure project, as well as some enhanced technical support from New Flyer and Heliox for servicing of the chargers over a five-year term, matching the extended warranty term. I'll note that this has not been reflected in the First Grand Amendment, but we have had discussions with B-Trans to get pre-award authority to execute that SLA and that those funds will be provided to GMT in a second mid-year amendment to the, to the state grant, likely to take place in January of this year. And final two changes are adjusting carryforward amounts for two line items from FY25 to correct the actual balance in those two projects that will be carried over in FY26. So with the upgrade fire suppression system, that's a decrease of seventy-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents to match the, the actual carryforward balance of four twenty-seven, seven forty-nine oh seven. And then line Z, that is decreasing by one thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and thirty-six cents for a actual balance to carry forward of seven thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars and four cents. So the cumulative changes are an increase of four hundred and eighty-two thousand seven fifty-four to the overall capital budget and a hundred and fifty thousand seven hundred and forty dollars to the current year local capital match, which I will note a ninety thousand three hundred and seventy of that are local capital match funds provided by the City of Burlington being programmed into the budget. Since there's only a couple of changes on the rural, I will just go through those quickly before opening up to any questions. The carbon reduction funding in lines AK and AL, those were previously listed as EV Ford Transits. We are now purchasing propane cutaways with those funds. That has been agreed upon with TBT and B-Trans and GMT is clear to move forward with the propane cutaway and fueling infrastructure purchases for the rural side in FY26. So I'll open up to any questions and we would entertain a motion to approve the proposed adjustment to the FY26 capital budget. I will stop sharing so we can see screens.
Go ahead, Tasha.
Yeah, thank you, Amy. Yeah, quick question. Thank you for that, Matt. Are there, I think I remember when we got the electric buses, we found we had to do a whole bunch of fire safety stuff. Were there things we're going to have to do for the propane vehicles and are they built into the budget? Thank you.
There are no fire suppression upgrades or anything for the propane vehicles. This would be exterior fueling and the only considerations there are from a permit perspective and a NEPA compliance perspective. And there's sufficient budget built in with a hundred and twenty-four thousand to support any permitting requirements. We're, we're performing the NEPA concurrence with FTA right now, essentially. We're going to be doing that ahead of the procurement. So those, any costs born there. There shouldn't be unless FTA requires enhanced assessments for the site. But we expect that the budget will support any permitting requirements that the fueling vendor would, would take on as part of the infrastructure project.
Thank you.
Other folks have any questions? Go ahead, Paul.
The Finance Committee did review Matt's report and recommend that it be approved to the board. And so I will make the motion that we approve the, the capital budget adjustments to the FY26 budget, capital budget.
Thank you. You have a second?
Christian Meyer, I'll second.
Thanks, Christian. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Or abstaining? Great. FY26 budget is approved. Thank you, Matt. The next item on the agenda is Matt. Again, we'll be talking about the FY27 capital budget, which is on pages seventeen to twenty-one. I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Amy. So I will share the FY27 capital budget. I'm going to zoom in since this is it's bigger on everyone's screen. Okay. So this is our initial proposed FY27 capital budget. And this reflects our current plan with the existing loano awards to B-Trans for electric buses, as well as fifty-three, thirty-nine grant applications that GMT submitted for both the bus and bus facility and the loano programs. So the, these projects are pending successful award by FTA for those projects. So I will start at the top. In FY27, we're proposing seven replacement forty-foot electric buses at one point three million each bus. We are programming fifty-five thousand per bus for tier-three funding from Burlington Electric. The actual level will depend on the mileage on the buses, the electric buses that we received most recently meeting a mileage threshold during their first year in service. And right now they are projected to meet that threshold. So we are expecting to get that fifty-five, the full fifty-five thousand in future years. Line B, this is for four replacement heavy-duty hybrid buses. So FTA this summer provided an opportunity for recipients that had active no emission loano awards to propose a restructuring of their grants to allow for the purchase of low emission vehicles, which are eligible under the loano program. So we worked with B-Trans as well as the Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation. They are the stewards of the, of the BW settlement funds that were awarded to Vermont, which are providing a significant non-federal match for the, for the bulk of the loano projects. So we, we proposed a restructuring, which would allow us to purchase thirteen electric buses in lieu of seventeen as part of the FY24 loano award. And then also provide funding for seven diesel electric hybrid buses. So we'd be able to increase the total bus count, or replacement bus count by three, purchasing twenty in lieu of seventeen. So we worked with B-Trans to submit that to FTA. Not clear on whether that's been approved to go forward by FTA, but we are going to reflect that in the FY27 capital budget. So we have four hybrid buses, three thirty-five and one forty, between nine hundred and twenty and nine hundred and thirty thousand apiece for a total of three point six nine eight million dollars. Line C, so the loano application that GMT submitted was for an LPG propane cutaway pilot project with our SSTI vehicle lease. The application was for twelve propane cutaways included, as well as fueling infrastructure, staff training and project administration. So in FY27, we're proposing to purchase six of those propane cutaways. Projected a hundred and ninety-two thousand five hundred each for a total of one point one million dollars. Line D, our bus and bus facilities application that we submitted also included some replacement gas vehicles that would be leased SSTI, one Ford Transit and two non-ADA minivans for a total of two hundred and four thousand dollars for that line. Both of those, we have the local match coming from our SSTI vehicle lease rent. So those are shown in the non-local funds. I did skip over on line B. We have, we're proposing that the local match for those, those buses be captured in, from the prior year local capital match fund. Working with Nick in preparation of the FY27 operating budget, we are benchmarking against a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars of total local capital match coming from the FY27 operating budget. That was the figure that he gave to me that will allow for a balanced FY27 operating budget. Moving along to line E, this is facility PM for the one-on-one Queen City Park facility, as well as the DTC requesting, or programming a total of seventy-two thousand eight hundred dollars covering a number of facility items that were identified in the capital needs assessment for this, this facility. Line F, our spare parts miscellaneous support equipment, proposing three hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars. That's a three percent increase over what we requested for FY27. We did because of the state of available capital funding in FY26, we have a lower amount there, but this is keeping in line with our level of investment in our five-year capital plan for spare parts and miscellaneous support equipment to support our, our maintenance operations. Additionally, we have line G, midlife overhaul for three heavy-duty buses. We are, we are aiming to move in a direction where we replace a certain number of buses every year, as well as perform roughly three midlife overhauls for our buses in, in the years, seven to eight or nine, if we are sort of behind schedule. This would include, include in frame render, engine replacements, transmission replacements and a comprehensive corrosion repair to maintain the serviceability of those buses through year twelve and beyond, should there be any delays in replacement of those buses. Line H, this is phase three of our electric charging infrastructure project. We're projecting a hundred, one million four hundred and eighty-three thousand. This is the number in that restructuring that I outlined before of our loano agreement or loano award. This would be for purchase of two hundred and eighty kilowatt chargers, feeding a total of six dispensers installed inside the garage. Line I, proposing ninety thousand for workforce development. Due to the age of the grant that has the workforce development funds, we're proposing to be a bit more aggressive in FY27 in an effort to spend down those funds as soon as possible. So we're increasing that to ninety thousand. We're also going to have a larger share of our fleet being electric buses. So enhancing or ramping up our workforce development efforts is prudent in FY27. Line J, this is for electric bus diagnostic equipment, special tools and, and personal protective equipment, thirty-eight thousand. That's in line with roughly what we've been spending per year over the last two years for the for that equipment. Lines K, L and M, this is getting into some of the other elements of that loano grant that GMT submitted that I outlined before. So thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars of fueling infrastructure for those SSTI lease cutaways, which would be propane. Project administration, we had a forty-two thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars of project administration funds in our application, which would cover GMT staff activities in getting this pilot project off the ground. And then finally, we have two thousand three hundred and sixty dollars in vehicle and infrastructure training for SSTI staff in the operation and servicing of those propane vehicles. The one thing I'll note, so we have the local funding coming from the SSTI lease for the infrastructure and the training project administration, since that would be covering GMT's costs, that is coming from the GMT local mesh funding from FY27. Moving along to line N, passenger amenity improvements, including ADA accessibility improvements. So in our bus and bus facilities application, we had, we requested funding for amenity improvements at twelve bus stops in the eight bus stops in the greater Burlington area. We're proposing five of those be slated for project activities in FY27. With the, with this line item, passenger amenity improvements, which have, which bring existing bus stops into ADA compliance are eligible for a ninety percent federal share, which is the amount that was requested in the application. So that is reflected in this capital budget, the ninety percent federal share and GMT and B-Trans sharing the ten percent non-federal match. Line O, this is for replacement bus wash for our main facility. Eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand three hundred and fifty-seven. This was also captured in the fifty-three, thirty-nine bus and bus facilities application. Our existing bus wash has exceeded its useful life, has increasing maintenance costs as well as downtime, which impact operations. This line item to maintain that hundred and eighty-six thousand of local capital match from FY27, we're proposing programming seventy thousand eighty-seven dollars of local match from the prior year local capital match fund to support this project. And just so I don't repeat myself constantly, lines O or lines, lines P through are, are all part of our fifty-three, thirty-nine bus and bus facilities application. So I'll just note that before moving through those, diesel field tank and pump replacements for a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Though that infrastructure is original to the building and critical to operations. So we're proposing replacement of those items in FY27. Hundred and eighty-five thousand for building envelope repair and maintenance for our one-on-one Queen City Park facility, addressing a number of corrosion-related issues with the siding, door frames, as well as an allowance for some roof flashing repair work in an effort to address the water penetration issues that we've been having at our facility for a number of years. Line R, this is improvements to the exterior walkway corridor between the driver break room and the bus garage. So as, as you all know, we did some office reconfiguration to move our driver break room and dispatch operations into the first floor admin area. The path of travel between dispatch, break room and bus garage leads to the outdoor walkway going across the courtyard that runs in front of the bus wash exit. So this would be installing an overhead canopy to protect that area from elements, as well as replacing the existing concrete pad in front of the bus wash exit with a new pad with an integrated ice melt system to improve safety in that. So that's a total of a hundred and thirteen thousand to support those activities. Line S, this is thirty-five thousand dollars for replacement office and technology equipment, largely hardware replacements for the security system, as well as general IT equipment. This is in our five-year capital plan and with thirty-five thousand dollars programmed for FY27. And then the last item is line T. This is third-party inspection and by America audit for those heavy-duty bus orders in line A and B, programming a total of sixteen thousand dollars for those activities. And because we have the rural transfer moving forward with TBT and RCT, we are only proposing an urban capital budget at this time for FY27. And as I forgot to mention in FY26's adjustment, this was presented to the Finance Committee, who voted in favor of recommending this to the board for adoption. adjustment, this was presented to the finance committee who voted in favor of recommending this to the board for adoption. So with that, I will open it up to any questions and entertain a motion to approve the proposed budget.
Thank you, Matt. If folks have questions. Go ahead, Paul, Connor.
Good morning. For the full-size buses, the now 20, I believe. Can you just give a picture of what does that represent as a proportion of the total fleet? And are there any? If it's a large portion, does, does that create any problems of having sort of like a big spike of how many need to be done in a chunk? And then how do you, how do we spread out the cost of that? So I'm just curious on that part. Thank you.
So first I'll notice because we've been doing this staged service reduction with our recent bid cycles and that, that process hasn't been completed. I, I can't confidently say what our total urban fleet will be after that is done. So there may be a reduction from the current level, but right now we have 60 heavy-duty buses in our Burlington fleet. So 20 would represent a third of that. And by doing these between five and seven replacements per year, we are hopefully hoping to avoid those big spikes and capital investment in a given year. We found that roughly five to six buses is a sustainable schedule. We have seven in this year because we are still playing catch-up with a lot of the gilling buses, which are now in excess of 15 years. But maintaining that schedule of five or six buses in a year will help avoid those large capital spikes.
Thank you. Good question. Thank you for the answer. Other questions? All right, hearing none, we'll entertain a motion. One is proposed there in our board packet.
I move to approve the fiscal year 27 capital budget totaling $18,210,271 for adoption.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thanks, Catherine. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Or abstaining? Great. Thank you for that. Thank you for the question and for the answers, and we will go ahead and move along. And this time we're going to talk a little bit about the climate assessment. That not global climate assessment, but the climate of GMT assessment that was done and an overview. Clayton, do you want to kick it off or should we pass it right to?
I would love to pass it on, but we're so far ahead of schedule that Stephen and Jason have not yet come online. I'm wondering if maybe we should move action item nine to here and while we wait for them. Cause we weren't expecting them until 8:15.
Okay. Any objections to moving item number nine up? None. All right. So Clayton masquerading as Chris will be taking it off.
Yep. And so apologies when I did the agenda. I'm so used to just automatically adding Chris to any action items for public meetings that I just put him down. But we're going to try something a little different here, which is going to be a sort of a preemptive request. And so we, we know that we are going to have a new bid, driver bid that will be out in March or February. We know that we've received a lot of feedback regarding the Franklin commuter, the number one and the number 11, which were modified in August. We know that we're going to need to look at our Montpelier link schedule and also the routing of it because not all of the Montpelier link runs currently go to the state office complex. So we, we know that we have four potential routes that we're going to be adjusting. And at this time, we don't believe that any of the adjustments would trigger our need for a public meeting. But what we don't want to do is be in a situation where we don't know, or we don't have authority to do a public meeting until mid-December. And so what I'm going to be asking the, the board to do is to give us preemptive authority that if if it is necessary to have public meetings to make changes to these four routes, that we get your approval to do so now, just to expedite and facilitate that. And, and so thinking about each of the, the routes individually, what we know for the Franklin commuter is that we've struggled to hit our time points. And, and that this is causing folks to regularly arrive along the routes later than our published schedule, which certainly has caused problems. And we've certainly heard from folks at the medical center that that's interfering with their ability to get to work on time. In regards to the number 11, this is probably where we've received the most feedback. The, the feedback really has focused on three areas. Number one, the, where we've received the most sort of concern has to deal with the number 11 no longer going directly to the front door of the University of Vermont Medical Center. We've also received positive feedback about it being a more direct route to downtown, but that has been much less than the negative feedback that we've received by no longer hitting the front of the medical center. The number 11 also made changes in South Burlington to include no longer servicing the airport. We received a lot of comments about that, but for most of the folks that have expressed concern about it, it was more they didn't like the concept that we didn't serve the airport as opposed to it actually, you know, impacting them. And, and lastly, we heard from folks at the bottom of College Street that the, that the new routing has impacted them and that there's some senior housing along that route that is made made it harder for folks along College Street to use the service. For the number one, I'm not anticipating that we would need to make any changes, but since we are trying to pair the 11 and the one together, there's the potential that if we have a change to the 11, it may cascade. And Catherine, I love your helper there. And and then lastly, for the Montpelier link, just as what I mentioned, that with the return to work for the state, we think that we're probably going to need to serve the, the state office complex more. I don't believe anything that we would do to modify that would require a public meeting, but if we do end up changing that or potentially eliminating, say, for, for example, service to the Waterbury parking ride, you know, then we would need to potentially have the public meeting. So, so usually we come to you and say, hey, here is what we have in mind and here are the changes that we would like to specifically bring to the public. In this situation, we just are hoping to get ahead of any potential changes so that we can have our February and March bid changes perhaps sooner than later. Happy to answer any questions.
I have the most ridiculous question. Why do we have to approve you all going out and talking to the public?
Well, I don't know. Chris, do you want to try to? I mean, other than it's in our policy. Is there, can you think of a reason why?
I don't have an exact answer for that.
Okay.
Yep.
Paul.
I'll just question Clayton, the, the issue of the Colchester entrance to the hospital. I expect that's a security issue for the hospital. I think they keep that door locked. Has anybody talked to security and see whether there's any possibility of meeting the bus or some other way of having the bus people be, the riders of that bus be able to get in that Colchester Avenue door?
So I'm not sure if this would address because the 11 would, would bring people to the front and the two also brings people to the front. And so Chris, has there been any issue with that back door impacting our routing?
There has not been any discussion, but Paul is correct that it is locked to employees with a UVM MC ID on that Colchester Ave side.
Well, that explains why we, why we fully go in instead of, instead of just dropping off at Colchester. But Paul, that's a, that's a good point. If we have the ability to streamline just because of a security thing for hospital employees, I think we should take advantage of that. So thank you for raising that to my attention.
Alana and then Raj.
Thanks. I, I was just wondering, even though we have pre-approved the the public hearings, would you still bring the changes to the board for discussion, the proposed changes?
Absolutely. And so we would still be required for any major service changes, which is what would require the public meetings to be adopted by the board.
But would we be consulted beforehand on the routing considerations?
I suspect that we would. It may need to be through the leadership committee since they will be meeting earlier in December. If, if we have a, a need for expedited timing, if there's not a need for expedited timing, then then it would be at the December meeting.
Thank you.
Raj, you put your hand down. Was it? Did you mean to?
I did. That answered my question. Thank you.
Oh, perfect. And Jamie put an answer to my question in the chat. The public meeting step in the policy to ensure that we receive public comment on any major service changes before the board makes its final decision. I don't think we ever had a requirement to schedule a public meeting because we want to get, gather feedback. Okay. All right. So giving some blanket permission for staff to bring potential changes to a public comment period is what's on the table.
I'm happy to make a motion, Amy.
Thank you, Catherine.
I move that the GMT staff are authorized to conduct public meetings if necessary to gather input on potential improvements and modifications to the Franklin commuter, Montpelier link, number one urban route and number 11 urban route.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'd second it, Christian.
Thanks, Christian. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Great. Thanks for thinking of it in advance. And I know that we'll have an opportunity to hear about if that happens, we'll know if we even wanted to attend. It's always fun to go and listen in on what folks are saying. Okay. So we're going to go back. I think I saw Jason join. So I think we're going to head back to number seven, the GMT urban climate assessment. That is 20 pages, 22 to 36 in our packet.
And happy to introduce Jason and Stephen, who have been with us through our initial climate assessment and the follow-up engagement with employees. I do want to note that it was important to Jason that we scheduled 29 minutes for his presentation, not 30. That's why we have Sandy on at 8:44. So just showing how flexible we are and, and meeting Jason's needs.
You're muted, Jason.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Clayton. Cause this is what matters. Timeliness. Yes. Well, speaking on behalf of Stephen and myself, it's been a pleasure working on this project for you. And hopefully everyone has had a chance to, to, to read through our report. If not, or if so, what I'm going to do is I'm just going to give a brief overview of the narrative. Stephen's going to talk about some of the charts and graphs. And then we're happy to take questions. Unless Amy, there's, there's a different way that you wanted us to proceed.
Nope, that sounds fine.
Great. Would it be helpful to? Well, folks, yeah, you, you have your own board packet, so you can, you can look at those. So the survey, we saw some, some positive results overall. When we look at all the questions and Stephen's going to go over this in more detail, almost all the responses were in the positive zone. So when people were asked, you strongly agree, do you strongly disagree? Most people said, yes, we strongly agree with these positive statements about GMT on average. So that's great. We also saw that that, that people saw the overall trend was that things are improving. They, they liked their coworkers. They liked contributing to community, the mission. That was all strong stuff. And, and the big challenge was about more, more, more accountability and support, which goes with sticking to specific outcomes for, for some of the work. And that includes some of the challenges tied to governance and communication and culture. There, as I have bolded on page two of 15, on your page 23, talking about the challenges, which are not surprising, neater for stronger governance, predictable funding, clearer policy direction. And people saw the transfer as a positive thing. So that's exciting that that's gone through now. Of course, the focus of, of this survey was on the Burlington group. We had done a similar survey with the Berlin group. So they weren't asked on these sorts of questions. And so then skipping ahead to our recommendations, there were six recommendations that we made and they are prioritized from one to six. And the first one is on the board. The second is just accountability systems in general. The third is having strategic plan, which a number of board members also said that they, they wanted to, to have more of. And, and, and in general for the board, it's just higher level stuff. And and I guess professionalizing the board, just having stronger ideas about, about attendance and, and follow-through as well as there, there's an interesting discussion at a nonprofit, not-for-profit conference led by United Way. And talking about different options for the board, like there, there are lots of different ways that boards are formulated. And so to think about that and knowing that you are largely a lay-led board, you're not transportation experts. Some of you are, but for the most part, you're representing your community. And so thinking about that could be a part of what, what you might want to pursue. We talked about rebuilding culture and trust. That that happens. After our first survey, we had recommendations and a lot of the recommendations were taken up by Berlin. And we saw big increases in satisfaction in Berlin. and a lot of the recommendations were taken up by Berlin and we saw big increases in satisfaction in in Berlin. Um, not so much in Burlington and the results were fairly similar to what we'd received before, um, which Steve will go over in more detail. Um, but um but overall, um, s- some positive notes, um, but still rebuilding the culture and trust um and strengthening safety and infrastructure. That's been an ongoing comment over the last two years. Um, and then then really celebrating this this rural transfer and thinking about the ramifications for, okay, so now that we're just focused in the more urban areas, um, let's lean into that because that is seen as a strength. I'm not gonna go through the the more um detailed breakdown, um, but Steve, why don't I let you pick it up from here and talk about the quantitative findings?
Okay, and I will actually share the screen since we're gonna be talking about the pictures. Uh, so uh the first summary pictures are these pie charts just showing that what the employees thought of the general direction of GMT, uh, including board members. Um, union was sort of split in three uh equal sections about getting better, about the same or getting worse. Uh, non-union employees, nobody said it was getting worse, uh, about evenly split between getting better and about the same. And the board was overwhelmingly feeling that the agency was uh moving in the right direction and getting better. Uh, the other overall trends, uh, if you look at the average rating among all of these um twenty or so measures, you know, a higher number is better. So the averages went up for all three groups uh with the the board having the highest averages. So they all inch up a little bit um on average. Let's just look a little more detail uh and breaking down these three groups and and how the um the measure stack up. In this chart, the blue lines represent the twenty-twenty-five survey. The red lines represent the twenty-twenty-three survey, and you can see almost everywhere the blue is equal to or better than the uh twenty-twenty-three survey. There's two um uh counterexamples. This one's pretty close. My work at GMT is important. It was slightly higher rating in twenty-twenty-three. Um, but the big one was this one about the benefits package and and the reason that the benefits package got a much worse rating in twenty-twenty-five is that this survey came out just a couple of weeks after the new uh health insurance package, which is announced, uh, which involves higher copays, more out-of-out-of-pocket expenses. And there was some disgruntlement among um employees about the fact that uh the health insurance uh package is not as good as it as it has been. And so that's reflected in this um chart with with the biggest drop in satisfaction between twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-five. And this is among union employees. You can see the union employees uh felt that uh these last three measures uh which were among the lowest rated measures had improved significantly from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-five, having to do with the board, uh, having to do with uh the salaries and wages uh since they had just uh ratified the new union contract. Uh, the next one is for non-union employees. It's largely the same. I would say the uh the differences uh with the blue lines are somewhat greater here. You can see you can see more blue sticking out compared to the to the previous one. Again, the benefits package is the biggest decline. Uh, and the other one is uh about working at home, uh, how how important that is to me. And and you know, the climate is different now in twenty-twenty-five compared to twenty-twenty-three. More people are uh coming to the office. I don't have statistics for GMT specifically, uh, but you know, with the state having back-to-work orders, there's working at home seems to be less uh vital, less salient uh compared to twenty-twenty-three. So that's not necessarily saying it's a bad thing. Uh, it's just saying that it's less less important than it was back in twenty-twenty-three. Um, and then among board members uh in general, uh the across almost every measure, uh, things are judged to be better now. You can see a big difference here uh about I feel valued at GMT for uh for my role. That's it was a significant improvement. Uh, other board members care about and listen to what I think. So it seems like the board has been doing work internally um and feels a greater sense of satisfaction about uh your your roles here. Um, this one, this is uh a little bit different. I mean, this I feel valued for my role. And um this one's my role at GMT is important. That's a little bit worse. So I don't I don't know exactly. Uh, I mean, this these are your votes, so I I guess you can think about why you might have uh rated those two things differently. Um, but in general, things uh are are viewed as more positive. And then uh just a couple more comparisons between the twenty uh among the three different groups for the twenty-twenty-five ratings. So there are a bunch at the bottom here for the board because these were not the same questions that was uh that were asked of the employees. So they're they're kind of on their own here. But uh in general, these questions at the top were common to all three surveys. And you can see that the board ratings are generally higher, which matches what we saw before, that the average board rating was like half a point higher than the employees' ratings. Um, you can see that in some cases, the non-union employees, these that's the purple line here is uh better than the union employees for a lot of measures here. Um, but these measures down here about uh career development path, workload and responsibilities. Um, those in those cases, the union votes were were slightly higher. And then the the final uh chart here just compares um how ratings changed uh among union and non-union employees between the two surveys. So uh if it's shaded in red or pink, that means the rating got worse on average. If it's shaded in green, it got better and the more intense the color, the more uh significant the change. So and these are ranked based on what the non-union ratings are. So the biggest improvement uh among non-union employees was that management cares about and listens to what I think. And this is sort of a tribute to uh Clayton and his senior staff uh making a concerted effort. And part of that is this is this study uh which really sought to engage employees and get their opinions. Um, so they do feel like they've been heard. Um, they feel like the workplace is is has improved. They'd recommend it to their friends. They trust their coworkers and so forth. Um, again, uh, the at the bottom here, the benefits package, uh, clearly the biggest uh negative uh feeling. Again, that's probably related to the recency of the fact that, again, the survey was just a week or two after that was announced. Uh, and again, this is not really a negative thing about working at home. It's just it's less important than it was before. Um, so uh one other thing to highlight here is among union employees, uh strong positive feelings about GMT management. And again, it's tribute to uh Clayton and the senior staff. Uh, they are clearly making an impression um on both the union and the non-union staff. So uh with that, I will stop and see if there are any questions.
I just want to share before we get into questions that I see kind of loud and clear that there are some um board-related items that are um um being shouted out, right? I hear that. I see that. And so um, the first thing that I did, um, Susan's been talking a lot about kind of our vision and we've said, yes, yes, yes. And so she and I sat down and I said, you know, you all know that that's not my area of expertise. Um, so I'm trying to get a clearer picture of what that process looks like. So um started to kind of sketch that out and I'll discuss with Andrea and Clayton at our next meeting what a path forward might be um to respond to um, A, what we've known we've needed to do and and now it is clear that the organization is um also demanding us get our act together. Um, so I see that loud and clear. Other thoughts, comments or questions? Clayton.
Um, thank you, Amy. Uh, so thank you, Jason and uh Stephen. Um, I definitely view these as, you know, gifts um of awareness with letting us know uh the things that that people are feeling about. Um, it's happy to see progress uh in some areas and um and then areas that we know that we need to to revisit. Um, one of the things that I'm sort of excited about is that we we already know that um um in the early part of twenty-twenty-six uh with our uh further transition work, um that we will sort of be restarting um our board committees um and thinking about those. And I think that we are gonna be, you know, uh primed uh or in a prime position to to act upon uh the the improvements that are described here. And so um I think that the timing of this information with where we are operationally um is is fortuitous and uh I look forward to to working on uh this with everybody.
Paul?
Yeah, I'm curious, Clayton, to see that safety is still not uh considered to be an excellent uh part of our operations. And I'm wondering if you've dug into that at all. I know we have a safety committee. Uh, I'm not sure who's responsible for overseeing safety in general. But it just bothers me that uh people wouldn't feel that we're an extremely safe place to work.
Yep. That um, uh, Paul, that definitely is an area that uh concerns me and um and that I had hoped uh that in the past few years with our safety committee became becoming um more active again, uh, that we would see that um change a bit. And so I think that um certainly something for the safety committee to, you know, to ponder is is uh um is is the outcomes and is it is it being effective and um uh so certainly a a highlighted concern for me.
And there's there's a couple components to that. One is the um um feeling on unsafe conditions, tight schedules and encounters with hostile or unstable passengers. Um, so s- some of that e- e- um is just really hard to deal with. Um, and that that doesn't say that you're not making improvements, but um again, this was all based on the survey, so we didn't do interviews and we didn't go into more depth on that.
Thank you. Catherine.
Um, although you didn't highlight it, uh, it's clearly obvious that the board thinks more heavily of itself than the staff thinks of the board. And I'm you know, two ideas come to mind of why that might be. One is that we need to do a better job. Um, two is that the role of the board and what we do and don't do is not widely understood among the staff or any combination of those two two items and many more. Um, wondering if any of the comments that you received shed some light or ideas onto why there is such a discrepancy with how the board rates itself and how the staff rates us.
Thank you, Catherine. So the it's not unusual for in organizations for there to be a board-staff split. Um, and we're seeing part of that here. One of the reasons why you probably rate yourselves much higher than the staff is because you know yourselves. You know the board. Um, and I'll I'll just ask a question. How how many board members have interacted much with staff? Okay, so we got one one or two people going like this, but silence otherwise. Um, so if they don't know you, it's really hard for them to know um how you're doing. And then they see problems and some of the things like the fiscal cliff was very clear to them. Um, a lot of people knew that that was happening and uh they didn't get strong communication about what was being done to address that. Uh, you don't have a strategic plan. Um, that's clear to folks. Um, and so I I think in combination of them just not knowing you at all, um, and um and then just seeing other problems. But but one thing that was consistent between the board and the staff responses was that how the board was doing was rated lowest among all three groups, union, non-union and board.
And we also, just to add to that, in, you know, a period when you're cutting service, which you've been doing significantly over the last year, it's easy to say, oh, well, that's the board's fault. You know, why why are we in this position? Uh, easy to blame the board. I mean, ultimately, the board is responsible. That's what what the board is. But um, you know, that's probably plays into those uh negative ratings.
A- a- and to be clear, um, in terms of negative ratings, they're all above um above the 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 even mark. So um, oh, I'm sorry. No, they're not. I'm sorry. Three would be the even mark. Um, and for non-union employees, you're below that mark. So it's negative for non-union employees. It's 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 slightly neutral for um for union employees. And overall, uh, the board is saying, oh, we're we're doing a pretty good job.
I'm gonna just bring that back to what I said to start us off. I I hear loud and clear that the the board is not meeting either expectations or what it needs to do, um, either to communicate or be strategic in its planning and to communicate that out. So um, that that needs to be a focus of ours, um, and certainly mine going forward. Uh, I don't know Bob or Alana who had their hand up first.
I actually want to, I want to continue this discussion a little bit.
Go for it.
Cause um po- part of it is what is the real definition of the board's role? I mean, a a board isn't really meant to be doing direct into employees or even interacting with employees unless necessary for some side discussion. Um, I mean, the board the board's role is to hire the the executive director to run the run the show. Um, so while it's nice for the employees to kind of know what our role is, our role isn't really be to directing or driving details. It's really to be setting strategy and overall setting, at least in my mind. Some boards take a lot stronger role. We've never it's been a long time since we've gone back and really defined what is the role of our board in the first place. So I think that fits into that concern that unknown. What are we supposed to do?
Yep. Thank you. All right, Alana.
Yeah, so just in looking at the numbers, it seems like the non-union staff a- actually had was less clear on the roles and responsibilities of the GMT's Board of Commissioners than the prior year. And though that seems to me that's the staff that wouldn't interact with the board substantially more than the union staff, if I'm interpreting the numbers correctly. Um, I guess uh overall, I'm uh I'm guessing that you're a highly qualified firm. You work with a lot of organizations. Um, I'm curious if you're seeing red flags here um in any of the responses. I know you have a list of, you know, of six strategy or strategic actions that we can take as an organization. And so I'm just sometimes some of those are stronger than others. It may be like one through two are the most important. We really need to focus on all six of them. So since you're here with us today, hoping to understand.
Sure. Th- thank you. And I'm sorry, your 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 mic cut out just a little bit. Um, you you were saying, did we see any? It sounded like you said red line?
Red red flags.
Oh, red flags. Okay.
Yeah.
Sure. Um, so I I mean, I I think um the the main thrust of the comments were that the folks, including the board, want the board to be at a higher level. Um, and seeing the overall big picture. So strategic plans, um, in the past, the fiscal cliff was certainly an issue. Um, and um, but then also like building trust um w- within yourselves and within the organization. And I think um uh Bob made a a very good point about that the board's job isn't necessarily to interact with the staff. Um, and I've also seen some boards where if they're riding the bus, just make a point to say to the bus driver, hey, I just want you to know, I'm a board member. I think it's great. The the work that you're doing, so valuable. Thank you. And that could be it. But that can make a big difference, a huge difference, because you may not realize this, but but your position as a board member holds a lot of of mystery and um a sense of power. So for you to be able to to say to a staff member, to say to a board member, hey, you know, just really light touch, you're doing a great job and um and to give the sense for um staff members to say, oh, yeah, I I've met some board members or I see them around, uh, but right now it's, you know, the wizard behind the screen. They don't they don't really know what's going on. Um,
If if I can uh jump in just with some thoughts about why the non-union staff If if I can uh jump in just with some thoughts about why the non-union staff votes might have come out that way. Um, I haven't talked to them about it, but this is certainly a time of flux and transition, not just with the rural transfer. But also with sort of the board committees and subcommittees being reformulated and the non-union staff may be more aware of that. And so maybe wondering, you know, how is this all gonna play out uh once the the rural board members leave? Once the committees uh have a new structure potentially. Uh and so some of that uncertainty may be playing into those uh into those ratings.
Thanks.
And and one, one other comment about um so the the board's role with the staff doesn't necess- it's part of PR thing, like just letting them know. Um, supporting them, making them feel good, but also to ensure that the board members know what the staff is thinking. They've had conversations um and likewise um staff members might have the opportunity to talk to board members. Um, now, of course, there's also downsides of this. It needs to be done carefully. Uh but directionally, you can see where some of the shifts are between board and staff and why, like who who are they? Wha- what are they doing? That sort of stuff.
Okay, fair and listened to and heard Austin.
Yeah, going back to Bob's comment, I do think that there also is just a slight disconnect often around the role of the board and and details surrounding the board. I mean, I've taken the opportunity in the past to get to know many of staff. Um, and I feel like some of the things that that I discovered during that were always kind of surprising. You know, with staff just even say, not realizing that the board members aren't paid or what interests they're they're representing or how they're appointed. So um some of it also might just come down to communication education on how this overall organizational structure is formed and what role the board plays.
If I can kind of uh add to that, just an anecdote from my experience, um a conversation that I had with, you know, one of our our drivers um at the beginning of the uh um service reduction process last year. And uh he came and and talked to me and and uh was, you know, suggested, hey, you know, instead of instead of service reductions, maybe, you know, we should reduce the the pay to commissioners. And you know, and and he, you know, didn't, and this is somebody that had been with us for a while, but because of his experience, he didn't know that, like, you all were volunteers and uh didn't know that uh, you know, we weren't a for-profit company, but just somebody that was, you know, looking to break even and and so I think that one of the things that we can't uh assume is that just because somebody has been here for a while that they kind of understand um how we operate. I do also want to uh to reiterate that I uh uh this is where I'm gonna be talking um um about my personal experience and certainly something I wouldn't have told you on my job interview. Um, uh which is that, you know, I think that boards are sort of a nineteenth century. Like, you know, the the notion that, you know, volunteers are are in a position to understand something as complicated as public transit and all the funding, uh you know, mechanisms. That's an awful lot on your plate and a high expectation. And and I think that um you know, to have somebody for their volunteer work, you know, like, hey, instead of working at the soup kitchen or working at um uh you know, a to- a toy drive, you know, you're spending your time managing, which is never that fun. And managing a complicated thing. And so I I just think that we need to, you know, don't beat yourself up too much, you know, board. The other thing that I would uh just say to keep in mind is that I'll share some of like my personal frustration over the past six months, which I think that some of the um uh uh non-union staff may feeling. And this is frustration not at anyone and it's not at um but it's just the situation like I'm eager to get going on, you know, how do we become the urban only, you know, organization that has a vision for what that means and but we're in this transition mode. And we still have to make sure that we're providing all of our real service. We have to make sure that we're supporting our rural staff. Um, and so I I think that that may be, you know, creating some of the uh the angst as well.
I appreciate that. Um, we are nearly at eight forty-four, which is our desired stopping time, but Susan looks like you're getting at the last word.
Yeah, I was just curious. Um, I noticed that the participation rate was quite quite low, quite a bit lower than last time, actually about fifty percent fewer uh responses. And I was just wondering if you could comment on how that might affect how we're uh interpreting the results that we're seeing.
Part of that is that uh we only, we did not interview or or survey our Berlin or Franklin Grand Isle employees. So that explains a lot of the missing votes. Um, but yeah, the the rate among uh the rest of the staff was was not quite as high as as on the rest, but I would interpret that as as satisfaction, because I think people tend to uh participate in surveys when they have something to complain about. And so if somebody didn't vote, that probably means that they're generally okay with things. But Jason, I don't know if you have further comments.
Yeah, I I don't know that I I could come to that same conclusion um a- about that people are satisfied, because it could also mean that they're like, well, they're not listening. Um that's not to say that that is what they're thinking. It's just, we don't know. Um, and when we did the first survey, we we coupled the survey with interviews. So then we got more of a context and then we could say with more certainty what that was. Um Now, one thing is, when the first survey was done, there might have been a lot of hope and excitement around it and um and also Clayton was new, so there were new things happening, so maybe there was more energy involved. Um, we had a hundred percent participation from the board. Um, and that dropped. Um, so you could ask y- your own board members what what was going on there for people who didn't take the time to fill out the survey. Um and that was after repeated reminders. Um, but but so so some of the the feeling of not needing to fill out the survey um on the board is probably similar or might be similar to to the rest of the staff. We just don't know. But but and so, so to your question, Susan, of like, so what do what do we take a- away from that? Um, I'd just say it 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 questions the certainty of the results a little bit more. But I don't think you can make summations about what does that mean? What does that mean? Because, you know, just like when a voter doesn't vote, what does that mean? It's like, well, it's my protest vote uh against which part? We don't know. We just don't know.
And if, and if I could uh follow up, I know that we need to get um, you know, back on track. But when I uh talked to some of the stewards about, you know, the participation rates, I got a beautiful gift of awareness. And and that was that, you know, I heard from them, well, we didn't really feel it was necessary because you know, the last time we did this, there weren't a lot of things that came out of it. And I'm interpreting this as like, oh, my God, as the executive, I see all of the things that came out of the last one. But clearly I didn't communicate that well. So that the staff knows that, hey, this positive change actually goes back to that org assessment that you did eighteen months ago. You know, this is the origin for that. And so I think that it really highlights to me the need for communication of, you know, of 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 laying out you know, the, hey, this change that we're doing now is coming from the org assessment, is addressing this, you know, particular situation so that um so that people can tie that back.
And I think that might be easier if we develop some sort of um at least high-level work plan that relates to um what we're doing um and then kind of work through there. So and I know that ties to a strategic plan, which ties to the visioning and and all of that. So um so yes, I think that might be a good idea and we can talk about that a little bit in our um smaller group meetings. Um, so thank you. Austin, is your hand still up? I'm, I'm gonna go with Austin's hand just got left up. Um, thank you to Jason and Stephen for um putting this together and the recommendations and helping us digest it and um look forward to uh working um on it moving forward.
Hey, thank you all.
Um, and since we are um five minutes over, our eight forty-four stop time, which is just making me laugh. I'm gonna kick it over to Sandy to give us our Catma update. Welcome, Sandy. Thanks for being here.
Great, thank you. I can certainly appreciate that survey question and participation rates and um people wanting to know, you know, the value of their participation. So I appreciate that conversation. Um, can you see my screen? All right, great. Thank you, everyone. Uh, good morning. Um appreciate the time this morning. I'm sorry I had to cancel last month. Um today, I am going to just cover a few of these brief updates. I do have a nine o'clock meeting um that I can maybe be five minutes late for, but I'll try to zip through these um updates. Um I wanted to first thank um all of the you who attended the Catma Summit. I thought there was good representation from the GMT board and staff. Um, our theme this year was um future and motion. Um, elevating transportation and housing and economic growth. Um, everyone, I think here knows that transportation impacts a lot of sectors. Social services, housing, economic growth, healthcare, uh climate. And the list goes on. And unfortunately, transportation is often absent, right, or comes up after the fact. So I wanted to take the summit as an opportunity to elevate transportation and the housing and economic sectors. Um, considering the robust goals in the region and state. Um, our event sold out this year uh to a hundred and sixty attendees. We had an opening keynote delivered by the Myrna Bader, which was very fun and energizing. The morning panel was quite packed and full of content. And thank you, Catherine, for moderating that panel. Uh, we had Alex Farrell from Vermont's Housing Commissioner on that panel, uh Kevin Chu from the Vermont Futures Project, Taylor Newton at the CCRPC, who had shared the future land use maps and development, and Matthew Rancio um at Vtrans. Um, throughout the day, attendees also had the opportunity to attend a number of breakout sessions. We had some great presenters, uh innovative ideas. Uh Reframe Lab, uh Peter Plume and Michelle Hobbs um conducted an interactive design jam. Uh, these were small group discussions that people talked about, what do we want to stop? What do we want to start? What do we want to continue with sustainable transportation? And one of the takeaways was make transit aspirational, make riding the bus cool. So I love it. Um closing out the summit, we had a policy panel led by Austin Davis. Thank you. Um, we had Tom Renner at Becca Balance Office on the panel and state senators, Kasia Rahm, Hensdale and Patrick Brennan. We had Senator Wendy Harrison attended the summit this year from Wyndham County. She's on the Senate Transportation Committee. And Ryan McLaren from Senator Welch's office joined us later in the day. And it was great this year to have some new voices in the mix. We had a number of contractors, PC Construction, DEW Construction, Engel birth, Whiting Turner, O'Brien Brothers. So it was great to have um some new um voices in the room. So thank you for attending. Um, quick update on our strategic business plan, which I had mentioned to you back in June. It was formally adopted by our board in late June. There's a two-page summary on our website under About Us. Um, we worked with Reframe Lab on this project and we're really excited about the roadmap it lays out for us. Catma is a thirty-three-year-old legacy organization. Um, and this five-year plan really gives us some clear direction. Um, how we can strengthen our leadership role in TDM, expand our impact and build long-term resilience. We did update our mission statement just a tad, um which is here um to lead and collaborate on building a more connected, resilient and sustainable network for our members and region. And our plan is built around these five pillars that you see here. And each of the, and our plan, each of these pillars includes specific goals and strategies and action that will help turn our vision into progress. The fluid document, um it will be reviewed quarterly by our board and modified as needed. Um, because things change, transportation policy, funding systems change, and we want to be sure we're evolving and adapting um to these changes. Uh, some quick transit program updates. Um, in the past, I've provided you with some historical context of GMT's Unlimited Access Program with Catma. So the program's been in place with UVM since two thousand and three and Champlain in two thousand and six. Um, today I'm just sharing a brief update on our FY twenty-six program. The collective contribution for Champlain and UVM is is just over four hundred and thirty-one thousand. Uh, you'll also see, we just received last week, um the quarter one ridership for UVM and Champlain, which I have here, a hundred and thirty-two thousand rides for UVM, eighty-four hundred for Champlain. Um, and you can see, you know, the FY twenty-five contribution and ridership numbers there. We're really excited to have the Medical Center join our Unlimited Access Program um effective October first. Um there, um, we have one agreement, as I think I had mentioned, um in June um for the three institutions. And each of them has an appendix in the agreement that includes you know, specific uh technical specs or data and costs related to each of those institutions. And so I really appreciate Clayton, like, working through that agreement as a comprehensive document. Um, it really, I think, that format really provides efficiencies, I think, for for everybody. Um, let's see, um, I guess in regards to how the Unlimited Access Program is functioning for um for the institutions, UVM is transitioning ninety-five percent of their affiliates to the Ride Ready app by December first is the goal. Um, so that's really exciting. Um, there'll be a small number of UVM employees that will kind of continue swiping their IDs because um they don't have a smartphone, but seems like the most practical option right now. So thank you, Jamie and Chris, for um for your work on that. Uh, Champlain is continuing to use their IDs to swipe, but they will explore, I think, in the near future, transitioning to the Ride Ready app. Um, the Medical Center was already using the app with their previous employee discount transit program, so transitioning um to the UA program was pretty straightforward. And one of the features that we really appreciate, and I'm sure GMT does as well, is that, you know, the live data um that we're receiving through the portals on a, on a um regular basis. So it helps us to monitor and analyze, you know, the ridership and planning. I do just have here, um, wanted to mention um that the, with the new Market Street um service that was implemented, congrats on the ribbon cutting in September. Um, that was really fun. Um, we've had some concerns, and I'm not sure if GMT is hearing this as well, about the elimination of the hospital entrance with the one and eleven changes. Um, it means that um someone taking tho- those routes um has to get off that main street. And it's like, you know, a s- a ten-minute walk to the main entrance. But I think for people that are accessing the hospital potentially, or, you know, weather um issues, you know, has been, you know, we're just hearing some complaints. So um and I am, I imagine that you may be hearing something similar. Um so I know in our agreement, we have language around service amendments and notifications. And GMT and the partners, institutions and Catmar are meeting December third, so we want to kind of talk about um these changes. So we want to kind of talk about um these changes. And, you know, I understand there's a, this take, changes take time and process. But so we'll um look forward to talking um that out with you on December third GMT team. I also wanted to mention that Katma's on board at some pretty uh two large developer members. Uh Cambria and Rise as a whole on North Avenue and Burlington Square. Jamie, together with Jamie and Chris and city planning staff, we've been working through questions about what and how and when to implement an appropriate transit program for them. Um, it's been a little bit slow because the city is planning to update their CDO Article Eight and its TDM requirements. My understanding is that the City Planning Office has hired some staff, so it sounds like that update process is going to start moving forward. So as a result, there's been a pause in establishing a robust formal developer GMT program until we can clarify these ordinance change ordinance as it exists and anticipate a changes. So um, I wanted to thank Chris. He's been engaged in the conversation over the summer and has provided some really thoughtful questions to city staff. And yet CarShare Vermont is also engaged in the conversation. Um, and we just need some better clarity around uh process, implementation and compliance expectations with the program. So it's just, um, we're just kind of in a transition time. And I just wanted to mention that and thank Chris for his engagement and questions. Um, coincidentally, uh, Chris, right after this meeting, uh, Charles Dillard and Scott Guston are meeting with Katma Committees um to share an update on where they're at with updating the ordinance. So we'll be in touch with you. And lastly, I just wanted to touch on our fall on employee and student transportation surveys and updates. Um, we conduct every fall uh travel surveys for our founding institutions and our membership. Um, and in the spring, we conduct uh surveys at our residential developers. We just closed our fall surveys and analysis is underway. So I would anticipate uh my next update to the GMT board here. Um, some, to share some results of the survey. There's a couple of questions here that Chris provided some input on. Thank you. And also, when I was here in June, I had shared our conducting a survey at Saxon Hill District in Essex. This is in partnership with the Town of Essex Economic Development Office. So I'm pleased to share, we did conduct the survey in October. And we surveyed about five hundred and fifty-seven employees. That is reflective of Blodgett Oven, Autumn Harp, and Performance Foods. Um, we're in the process of analyzing that data. They had a, um, two of the employers had a forty percent response rate. So we're super excited about that. We will put together a report uh for, that will present to the employers, to the town and their select board. Um, and we'll also be happy to share the findings um with GMT. Um, I know transit to Saxon Hill is pretty limited. But I want to welcome, you know, conversations with GMT and the town and these employer, bring these employers together on potential solutions for their district. I think car pools and van pools are a good option for these employers with their sort of manufacturing type of schedules. And so my hope is that this survey, it brings these employers together to talk more, to talk more about transportation collectively um versus in their silos or at all. So that's all I had to share with you today for an update. And I guess one question I had was if GMT has um uh implemented the engagement committees. I know that was something um you all were working on, and I'd love to participate on them if there's um space or when, when they're moving forward. So thank you. I welcome any question.
Thank you so much, Sandy, for, A, the conference, which many of us were at, which was great. And for uh the presentation today, and and Jamie in the chat said that the engagement committees will start in January and she'll email you details.
Great. Thank you so much.
And I know you're late for your meeting, but does anybody have a burning question for Sandy? Susan does.
Yeah, I have a, a hopefully a quick one. Um, Sandy, thank you for that update. Um, I was just wondering, in your discussions with all of the various partners that you work with, has um the topic of providing um uh like automated, automated small shuttles um for simple routes come up as a potential um solution to any of the transit problems that you're discussing with others? So like, um, on the sort of needed route.
Yeah, we haven't, um, it really makes sense, especially with like a group of employers. Like I think Saxon Hill could be like a good um pilot if they had a shuttle that went, you know, back and forth at peak times from where the transit stop is, which is about a mile out from the district. And so we do plan to sort of talk about that. Um, but we haven't. Um, I mean, it is it is a program or service that we have in our minds and we talk about. And I think um it really, I think depends on what the schedules and and the, the people involved are vested in these solutions as well. Um, I know Wake Robin years ago, they, they, I think they have a similar um type of program where they have a fleet vehicle that's sort of going up, up and down, you know, at peak times um to where the shuttle stops on Shelburne Road. So is that sort of a type of program that you're talking about or thinking about?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that and uh, um, you know, uh, whether these are, so I've seen auto, the automated shuttles and other environments. So I was just wondering if that was something, but just so driverless shuttles, if that would come up in any of your conversations.
Yeah, well, continued to explore that. And I don't know, maybe microtransit, you know, also could offset some of those needs as well.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. And Sandy, I appreciate um the updates. It's really helpful. It's nice to see the ridership with our partners, your partners, our partners, um, and to see how that changes and hopefully improves. And so I will let you go to your next meeting, but thank you so much for joining us.
And thanks GMT team for your collaboration. Have a good day.
Great, you too. All right. And since we've already had number nine, um, jumping right into our general manager report, Clayton.
So um folks who have been with us for a while, um, may recall that when I started, I, I put together the uh very nice, long general managers reports and um included with lots of, you know, like the tidbits from the month. And uh then reality set in and uh I realized that this is a time to put those together was not something that I was going to have. Uh, but it is something that I want to work towards getting back. I realized that there's a lot of things that sometimes happen that um don't make it to your level. And so I'm going to try to start, um, you know, putting together these sort of readers digest snippets. And um, I do want to uh uh point out that uh I'm not talking or in the, in the um email with the different items that I sent out last night. I don't mention the ADA assessment methodology change because I, you know, previously sent some correspondence on that, but uh, but that certainly is going to be something I'll be doing in the next months is coming to our municipal partners, talking about adopting the twenty twenty-three um ADA assessment methodology. Um, another thing that uh we'll be working on in the coming months is that uh we were able to get our uh nonprofit status um confirmed by the IRS. Um, and so um, uh, one of the first things that we need to do is have a meeting with our um um, uh, our lawyer ed and our finance uh team to make sure that we, you know, create uh some boundaries uh so that we don't um, you know, get ourselves in trouble with uh with having new accounts. Uh, so that'd be happening. Um, we believe uh that we will hear the results of the fifty-three thirty-nine bus and bus facility application this week. Um, so earlier in the meeting, we had heard from Matt about a lot of uh the items that would be included in that. Um, and uh our understanding is that uh by the end of the week, hopefully I will be sending a message out to you all, letting you know uh what the status of that will be. Um, one of the things that the Leadership Committee is uh was briefed on um and uh by John Moore at their last meeting is that our elderly and disabled persons transportation program is really um struggling financially. And uh, and so we're going to be needing to make some modifications to the participation guidelines. Um, having them uh be more in line with uh RCT and TVT. Um, one of the things that um makes this situation a little odd is that it, it impacts both urban and rural. You know, usually we have something, you know, impact one or the other, but this uh cuts across both. And um, and so uh I just want to make sure people know that uh this is something that we're going to be working on. And you may hear uh concerns uh about. We, uh, I tried to schedule our next assessment reform meeting in December on December eleventh, and that quickly crashed and burned because of lack of availability from some of our town and city managers. So we're going to be um looking for another time uh to bring them in uh to talk about um uh the new methodology. We did get from our um consultants uh some samples that uh would go along with what they were talking about with having a assessment that would be based on population um and job density, um as well as boardings and lightings. And so um, I, I can tell you, I have some concerns with what we, you know, have seen so far in the sense that I think it's going to be um very hard to come up with a new methodology that is not going to uh um have some uh of our members, you know, take bigger hits than others. And so that's just, I want to be open with that. Um, at uh one of our previous meetings, uh uh was brought up about discount verification and uh, you know, with many of our riders uh receiving the discount um without going through a verification process, especially the cash-based riders. Um, so we did get some guidance from FTA. Um, we're looking at um our financials um to kind of give us a, a bigger picture idea of, you know, potentially um, you know, what the scale uh of the issue may be. Uh, but I'll be returning to the leadership data, probably not uh for their next, or I definitely not for their next meeting uh next week, but uh perhaps as soon as uh the December leadership meeting, we'll have some information to share on that. Um, with the last uh leadership meeting, I did, uh, we did uh sort of come to the agreement that we are not going to pursue any legislative changes to our charter this coming session. Um, and so uh uh, we, we had potentially looked at tweaking it, um, potentially looking at board makeup. And I think that the uh, the consensus is that we have a lot that's changing and that perhaps we, you know, want to see how some of the other things play out before we um promote more changes. We are looking to adopt the VP TA um uh recommendation for having a retail delivery fee um uh for a dedicated funding source for, for transit. Um, I don't think anyone at VP TA is under the illusion that this is likely to occur just because of um, you know, the governor's um um prohibition on new uh fees and taxes. But um, but we'll be joining that and uh the legislative process always has surprises. So we'll see what happens. Um, I know that uh Dan is on here, not sure if Ross is as well, but uh I had a really positive meeting with them and Michelle uh last week. Uh, talking about a variety of issues on the rural transfer and the upcoming legislative session and happy that it looks like we'll be um joining the uh or starting the legislative session, mostly in alignment uh with Vtrans. The uh, we had such fun time with Aun last month and uh before that we've already signed up for another exchange. And uh there will be um another exchange happening in April, May uh with somebody from Latin America. Uh, one of the things that was nice this time around is that we were able to uh look at candidates and um um, and so we uh put in for two candidates that have a transportation backgrounds that uh uh that may be useful for us. So hopefully in the springtime, we'll um have an opportunity to go through that again. And lastly, I just want to give a shout out to all of our folks uh who are working on the rural nonemergency uh medical transportation, i.e. Medicaid Transit. Diva did their um audit of all of the providers and GMT came out very uh favorably and compared to the other providers. And uh that was very satisfying to see um considering um our recent um corrective action plan. And uh I think really does highlight uh the great work that uh uh John Moore has done and uh getting that team um uh up to where it needs to be. So those are just some of the items that um wanted to make sure that you knew about uh that you um may have missed. Or otherwise would miss if I didn't put them together like this.
Thank you. Questions or comments? I know it was all written down. It was um, you know, nice to have it from my brain and in a writing and then have you talk through. So that's how my brain works. Uh, Lana.
Thank you. I have two comments, but I only remember one of them. So um, but thank you for following up on the discount verification. Um, I think that was a important comment from staff that we should be paying attention to. I um, I uh, I'm just, I'm curious about the package delivery fee. I know there was a lot of discussion about that um already. I do feel that um having a sustainable funding source at the state level is critically important to the sustainability of transit in the state. Um, I do feel like this is an area where the board has a lot of expertise and uh should be weighing in and is worth discussion. Um, you know, as you said, a lot changes at the legislative level during this session. Um, and it can move very quickly. And I think it's important for the GMT board to have a position and a fallback position and a strategy and also to work collaboratively as communities and as organizations um to achieve that fiscal sustainability through a sustained funding source. So, so I, I, I think there should be more discussion on this moving forward um from our opinion. And I don't remember my other part, but thank you, Clayton.
Thank you a lot.
Okay. I'm going to move us on to board committees. We had two that have met. Paul, did they, did finance talk about anything that we didn't just hear about in the meeting?
No, actually, uh, it's covered this meeting and in the packet was uh Nick's finance report. So hopefully if people looked at that, you'll see that we're, we're doing quite well. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, and leadership met. We didn't talk about anything other than we haven't talked about just now, either through um Clayton's comments or through the meeting, with the exception of one thing. And I think this is still something that we are grappling with is that what is, what does our board look like when we uh lose our rural partners? Um, and I want to tie that back to something that we've been talking about in that level of expertise. Um, we have um on the board within the urban, we have lots of municipal um people with lots of amazing municipal experience. We have um, I think for the first time in a long time, a, a lot of bus riders who are on our board or alternates, which is helping us. But we will lose some of the professional skills of our, our PCs um as they transition away. And that's something that I think we need to um discuss. Um, how do we fill that um void? And then Bob made a comment um in a meeting that we were on yesterday. Um, I, we had considered that Bob and Catherine would be leaving us after December um because the rural transfer for Franklin and Grand Isle happens January first. Um, but do we want to consider inviting those two individuals to join us in January just to make sure that there's no bumps um with the transition? Or if they wanted to be part of the conversation to iron out any bumps? And And also, and I see your hand, Tasha, but while we're saying that, I do want to say that December is a, a, a nice time for us to get together back in person for a board meeting. Because for all the great reasons that being in person brings some synergies and flexibility, but also if we are going to say to, goodbye to long-term board members, it would be nice to come in person. So that's what I'm proposing, a December in person, if you can, meeting, recognizing that all people can, but if we can make a concerted effort, I will do some baking and bring some treats in as an opportunity to do that. Tasha, do you have a comment on all that?
Well, I think the baking would be wonderful. Thank you. So anyway, going back, I think it would just be terrific to have Catherine and Bob attending in whatever capacity. I think through a few months of the transition and I'm, and part of that is I would hope to do the same thing when, you know, our, our region transitions in June, just because I think it would be so helpful to the communication and to understanding how things are evolving. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Bob and Catherine, did you, I'm putting you on the spot. Did you have a perspective of whether A, you can come to an in-person meeting? Far from you on next board meeting and whether you're itchy to have that be your official last one?
I was going to let Catherine go, but food, food always works.
Done.
And I, I think we should probably call that the last official one. I, I think a transition follow-up might make sense, but see if Catherine think that makes sense too.
I agree with Bob. And yes, I'm going to do my best to be there in person for the December meeting and would be happy to attend the January meeting. I think hanging on for too long interferes with your ability as a board to begin the urban transition. So I don't want to interfere with that. And, but I would be happy to attend as a, as a how are things are going update.
Fair enough. Thank you both.
Oh, and the one other, but the one other piece is I do think we need to think about how we still are available to GMT because you'll be running the commuter. So we do need to think about that connection and how that's going to work long-term. It doesn't have to be as a board member, but just in some way.
Well, one of the beauties is committees can have non-board members on them. So if we were to do an appropriate committee, that would be an opportunity to have that engagement there. I don't know yet. We have opportunity. Do we have other board commissioner comments? Anybody want to say anything about anything? Not anything. Tasha.
Oh, sorry. Well, back to the vacuums now.
Yeah, we can talk about baked goods.
Oh, I, I, so no, I was just kind of, one thing that I, I, I would really like to have happen, and I don't know how this transpires, is that there does seem to be a difference between the state's understanding of the economics of the transition and how that all plays out. And some of the things we've heard from our own finance staff about the numbers. And I'm just kind of curious, what kind of financial reporting is anticipated with these transitions? Thanks.
It's a good question.
You know, so I'm not sure that we've contemplated having financial reported, reporting separately for the transitions themselves. We will hear in December, when Nick presents the fiscal year 27 budget. You know, we'll have a better idea of what the rail transfer does mean to our urban budget. And it does put a lot of, of stress on it. But I don't know if, if we still have Dan or Ross.
Go ahead, Dan.
Thanks. Actually, just what, exactly what Clayton said, that's exactly what we're waiting for, the urban only version of the budget to look at how that truly impacts urban. The rural, you know, side of the house, you know, we will use our fiscal year 27 grant applications to determine that those funding levels, that application comes out in March. And so, so all of that to be said, Vtrans is happy to come back in like April, perhaps might be the right timeframe to, to present on what the rural side looks like and what the urban side looks like. And so, but all this to say is we're sort of still waiting on a lot of numbers. And then there's also the audit that GMT Urban is still working on too. And so it's not that we don't, not that we won't, it's just that we're not ready yet to give those numbers.
Thank you. Lona? Oh, you're still muted.
Thank you, Amy. I'm just looking for more data. I know the performance committee isn't meeting, but just because the committee isn't meeting, I still believe we need to receive regular updates. I personally would like to know what ridership is and, you know, on a, at least on a monthly basis and then look back at yearly's and also to understand, you know, what our ridership revenue is. When I look at the dashboard, it seems to be a little bit out of whack online. So I'm not, it doesn't, I feel like there is more recent data, especially hearing Katma talk about they're able to pull up data in portals. So it would be great to receive that more, much more regularly than we're receiving it now. Thank you.
Great. I do have one more comment and I meant to share it and did not yet. But I wanted to share that from time to time, different communities have been connecting with each other just to kind of strategize about both what their communities are looking for, how they're planning and how they can support transit, both within their communities and within the system. And I know Burlington and South Burlington met as well as Williston, Shelburne and South Burlington. So from time to time, we included our meeting and trying to figure out strategies and design and future planning. And it seems very positive, but I also wanted to make sure folks knew that stuff like that was happening, just to, to engage in that communication. Any other thoughts, comments, questions? Cheers. Baked good stories, requests? All right, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thanks, Tasha. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? I think we're good to go. I wish you all a very good day, a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday, if that's your jam. And I look forward to connecting with you soon.
We'll miss you, Bob and Catherine. Bye, Amy.
Thank you very much. Bye.